Going to do my best not to tap this too much tonight. As mentioned, we're not going to have a formal opening statement tonight, so we're going to start with a broad introductory question, which is simply, why are you the right person to lead the city council for the next four years? Kim, we're going to start with you.
Well, thank you very much, and it's great, and it's an honor to be here tonight. I'm Kim Please. I want to be your next city council president. I have the business experience, the leadership skills, and the background to lead this city. I'm a positive person. I love this community. I love the people that live here, and I have so much to give. I'm willing to give the next four years of my life to this city to make it even better than it is right now, because I don't recognize my city anymore. And I believe I have all the skills and the attitude to do whatever it takes to be your leader of the city council.
Betsy?
Thank you, and once again, thank you all for coming tonight. Yes, I'm Betsy Wilkerson, and I'm running for city council president. I'm running because I have the leadership skills, I'm a business owner, I serve on council, I'm a grandmother. I want Spokane to be more than what it is, and to do that, you need strong leadership. I have a long history of community service in Spokane in various areas of housing, and nonprofits, and philanthropy, and business, and mental health. I think all those things are needed to bring our city forward. I have the collaboration and the relationships to make that happen. I'd be happy to serve, and I'll be ready to serve on day one.
The city is currently working to address an approximately $20 million hole in the next year's budget. As a small part of addressing this issue, the Woodward administration has recommended raising property taxes next year, and suggests that a larger property tax hike is necessary for the long-term health of city finances. Would you support raising property taxes, and do you have other proposals to make the budget sustainable? Betsy, we're going to start with you.
Again, thank you. Yes, we do have a $20 million budget. How did we get there? A lot was unfunded over time for our police and fire. Glad to pay them for the work they do. We are looking at a structural difference. We are spending more than we are bringing in, and at some point, something has to give. Do we cut services? Do we cut employees? That would not be my wish. There is property tax on the table, property tax levy lift. If we want to continue down the road we're going, that's something we'll have to consider. At this point, to make sure our employees are paid fairly, and you get the services you deserve, I would support that.
Kim?
Well, as a business owner in this community for 32 years, the last thing I want to do as your city council president or leadership is to raise our taxes. We just went through two, over two years of being shut down with COVID. My business was shut down. I lost 85% of my business, and there's still, we still have after effects. Our working families are struggling. You know, I said the grocery store today, food costs have gone up and skyrocketed. So, I do support, though, cutting. All our families are cutting wherever they can. And so, you know, the last thing that I want to do is raise taxes. I think what we all need to do is, I know our current city council, they've, you know, hired a bunch of people after COVID, and, you know, I think when times are tough, that's the last thing you want to do is start hiring people, so.
Kim, as a follow-up to that, cuts to the city council's office budget, which totals around $2 million, would not be sufficient to salvage the gap that we're facing. Do you have any other proposals to finish filling that hole?
Well, I can tell you what we're not going to cut is public safety. That's my number-one priority in Spokane, because public safety affects every part of our community. It affects tourism, our parks, our housing, in every area. So that's one thing that I will not cut. But we've got to start incrementally, immediately. And I'm, in my business, I went out every single day and tried to bring business into my business, so my employees would have work to do. And so, you know, this is where planning comes to, into it, is that I'm a planner. I always plan three to five years down the road as our city council. You know, my opponent's been on the city council for three years, and it's just gotten worse and worse and worse, and their budget has increased by a million dollars in the last couple of years. And that's been called for, in my opinion.
Betsy, back to you. What do you think about proposals to cutting the city council office's budget? And do you have any other proposals?
Well, first of all, the administration is supporting the levy measure for a new jail that is a tax, and they're looking at using some of that funds to fill the city coffers, the gap that's existing currently. We know that budgets are tight for everybody. That's a given. So if my opponent doesn't want to look at the potential of even raising taxes, then our city employees will suffer as well. We have some other ideas about low-hanging fruit, things that we could cut in the budget, but it will not be enough to fill that significant of a hole.
Can I rebut that?
Yeah.
Well, I would like to say, you know, we have a housing shortage. We have a lot of people that want to move here, and we need to start building some homes and doing a better job at planning. And when people move here, that's, you know, more taxes that they're going to pay that'll help us pay our bills. So I'm, we have to be proactive and figure out ways, other ways to, you know, raise money, so to speak. And I know how to pivot, and I know how to raise money, done all my life.
Betsy, back to you. Why are you the best candidate to support the mission of the Spokane Police Department?
Could you repeat that again, sorry?
Why are you the best candidate to support the mission of the Spokane Police Department?
My record speaks for itself. I have funded and supported police since I came on council. We have funded cars, we have funded equipment, we've advocated and legislated for the training center. All the things that they have requested and tools they have needed to keep them safe and effective on the job, council has supported. So there is this narrative that council doesn't support police. That's absolutely not true. If you read the paper today, Spok's Review, it said, even the guild president says council supports the police. We have, and we will continue to do that, and I will continue to lobby for additional funds for officers, things that we can't fund at the city level, and we could lobby at the state level. I will be the first one in Olympia to do that.
Kim?
Well, I would definitely rebut that, because I don't believe, I don't, I can tell you that she protested having a police precinct in her own district that her district asked for and wanted. The mayor was very deliberate in getting that in there, and I've been in that community and talked to them. You know, an email came out not too long ago about, you know, Betsy and our current city council president making fun of our police department and saying, they'll grab a bat and do a better job than our officers. You know, what an insult to our police officers that risk their lives every single day for our community. I could go on and on. Her voting record does not support her statements just now. I have been endorsed by the Spokane Police Guild, despite the fact that, yes, she did approve their contract, but they came out and they endorsed me because I am pro-police. I went on a police ride-along and saw what those officers have to do on a daily basis. I know the police chief and his wife, Tracy, they are amazing people and care about our community, and I have their back.
Betsy, would you like to rebut that?
I would. Thank you for that. So the police precinct in East Central, I just have to comment on that for one last time. There was already a police precinct in East Central. It wasn't something new. They relocated to the library without true community engagement. When the council members who represent that district didn't know they were moving, how was that outreach and engagement? And I am at the MLK Center, and I can tell you, from this summer, young kids of color still have issues with the precinct being across the parking lot. So we have to work on engagement to make that happen. Thank you.
Spending on police overtime has ballooned in recent years, and police officials have argued that the primary action the city could take to reduce overtime spending is to aggressively recruit new officers. Both of you have said that you would support recruiting new officers. What would you do specifically to make it more attractive to work in Spokane as an officer?
A couple ideas we've thought about is, in the old days, for older people, we had a fund, if police officers bought housing within the city limits, we would help them with home ownership. That would be attractive to a new young officer going forward. Also, how do we, how are we recruiting our officers? I've asked about homegrown. We have five colleges, universities, right in our area. What does that look like? I know they go to Montana, they go to northern Idaho, they go to Oregon, but let's look within our city. And at the state level, and through the Association of Washington Cities, we are also lobbying for funding and things we could do to make recruitment of officers across our state, not just the city of Spokane, but every city is being faced with these challenges as well. But home ownership, I think, would really be something that could be attractive to a new officer.
Kim?
Well, the first thing is our officers themselves. If they don't feel supported, why would they encourage other men and women to join our police force? During my ride-along, I got to go to the, where, the roll call, and I met, I said, can I take a couple minutes and talk to the other officers? And they were so just upset about their own vehicles, and, you know, they're sharing cars, all their cars are antiquated. And so if I was a person and I wanted to join the police force, you look at the tools they have. All their vehicles are so antiquated, it's frankly embarrassing. So that's one thing that we can do, number one, is get new vehicles for our officers and tools to help them.
Let's talk about cars, police cars.
Let's talk about cars.
Council has funded automobiles, vehicles for police officers. I have to let you know that former administration had not put in any funding for police vehicles. This council did. The money is there. It is a supply issue. We are looking across the country for vehicles for our police officers. They need dependable cars to show up when we need them. So if that's an issue, it's nothing council could do more than to give them the money to execute. That's on the side of the administration.
Can I rebut that? Well, that's the difference between my opponent and I. I'd pull out my Rolodex, and I've done business with Ford Fleet. I would pick up the phone, and I found out from one of the council members that Ford keeps putting us down on the waiting list. And I tell you, I'd pick up the phone as your city council president and go, hey, remember me? I'm Kim Please. Well, now I'm the city council president, and I want you to add us. We're the second-largest city in this state. I want my cars for our police officers. That's what I will do. I have a mouth. I'll use it.
On the topic of police accountability, do you believe that the office of the police ombudsman is currently sufficiently empowered to provide oversight for the police department? And specifically, do you support giving that office the authority to compel interviews with officers during investigations?
Absolutely. And I just have to quickly say, as a city council president, you cannot direct staff, and you cannot pick up the phone and do contracts. I just want you to know, that's how our city government is designed, the separation of powers. I would support an ombudsman. That's what the people voted for. That's what they have wanted. There have been barriers and obstacles to that, but our citizens want accountability, and we want it for everybody. We want it for the citizens, we want it for the officers, so we can all be safe. I think that is critical, and that office should be empowered to do what the citizens voted it to do.
Kim?
Well, I absolutely agree. And every circumstances is different, and it, you know, depending on the incident, absolutely. And I would support any investigations that would deem necessary for them to do that, absolutely. The public requested that, and I support that. You know, we work for you, the people.
Speaking of we, the people, here's an audience question. With crime skyrocketing over the last couple of years, specifically violent crime, what can you do better than your opponent to make Spokane safe?
Can I go first?
Yes.
Enforce the laws, number one. Our city council just, and our state legislature, just keeps taking the, you know, the laws and loosening them and making them not so stringent. So, number one, enforce the laws. So as your city council president, there are so many issues in our city with violent crime, and we just need to enforce our laws, bottom line.
Well, the mayor just said crime was going down. So, yes, police can enforce the law. We could work with other organizations. There is this collaboration that needs to happen more between police and communities, because we could be a partnership in helping to police our own neighborhoods, but we have to feel like we are welcome to be a part of that. I think that would be something we could start immediately. I know the chief has gone to a community policing model. It hasn't been fully flushed out, but I would truly be in support of that.
Can I, sorry, can I rebut that?
Go ahead.
Well, I just want to let you know, my opponent opposed police patrols in our parks at night. I mean, that's absolutely ridiculous. So I would support laws that would allow our police officers to go into the parks at night and enforce encampments, and, you know. So, again, it comes down to enforcing our laws.
Betsy, would you like 30 seconds?
I would. There are laws on the books now that the police can enforce. Quickly, I spoke at Lewis and Clark last week to high school seniors in a sixth class, and they talked about parks, and that made no sense to them, that they couldn't go to the park after 10 o'clock at night. So we have to look at the entirety of it. There was a few parks that were having real challenges, but did we have to blanket the whole entire city for that? Our young people will be voting, and we'll be hearing from them. So there are laws on the books, let's enforce those laws that we have.
In the city of Spokane, money from tickets issued through red light and speeding cameras go into a dedicated pot called the Traffic Calming Fund. That money has traditionally been used for infrastructure projects like stop signs, speed humps, things along these lines that increase traffic and pedestrian safety. This year, the mayor has proposed dipping into that dedicated fund to instead cover gaps in the police department's budget. Do you support this? We're going to start with Betsy.
I do not. That traffic calming money, those are from the red lights. Neighborhoods have been meeting over what they could do to make their neighborhood safer, to help with cars speeding through their neighborhoods, and if it did happen, which I do not support, it's only one-time funding. Then what are we going to do the next year? So we continue to take from traffic calming, for which the neighborhoods have advocated for so much, and then just fund the budget with that and not put in traffic safety in neighborhoods. That's not what the neighbors are telling me. They want people to slow down, and that's what that money is dedicated for.
Well, that's why we need new leadership in our city council, especially the city council president. I do support community policing, and, you know, the mayor puts together the budget, and I feel, you know, that is necessary at this time, right now, to use that money for what she indicated to put it, because we're under a shortfall.
I have another audience question. The way that it was written originally is, why no reduced speed near Dutch Jake's Park? More broadly, I want to ask, do you support reducing speed limits around city parks?
Oh, absolutely.
This is actually going to Kim first.
Okay. I missed the last part of that, I'm sorry.
Do you broadly support reducing speed limits around city parks?
Absolutely. You know, without question.
Betsy?
I do as well. A personal tragedy, I had a nephew who was four years old by a park. He ran out to get the ball, car was speeding, he was hit, unfortunately, he passed away. And so that has always stuck with me, where young children are playing, not just young children, but seniors and anyone, in a place that we have designed to be safe, yes, I would support speed limit around parks.
This region has a long history of dealing with hate, whether the MLK march bomb threat, the history of the Aryan nations in the region, and just recently, we've seen a string of vandalization of LGBTQ symbols and organizations. What is the city's role in combating that hate? Betsy?
Well, council has taken a position and put a resolution out. I think as leaders, we have to stand strong and bold that hate is not welcome in our city. We all belong. That is what the legislative body can do, along with supporting our police officers, again, to enforce the laws that are on the books. But we have to make Spokane safe for everybody. I also talked to some of my business friends. It's safety, but it's an economic issue. If we have incidents like they have had in our neighbors in the state next door to us, do you know how long it would take for us to recover, and how that would impact us economically? So all the good work we've been doing could blow up just on one bad incidence of hate in our community.
Kim?
Well, hate is, you know, one of the most important roles, I think, as the city council president, and as the city council, is, you know, hate is not welcome. You know, everybody is welcome in Spokane, and you're, you know, the words and actions of the city council president and city leadership are so important. So you can either, you know, keep the peace, or your words and actions will just polarize this community. So, you know, I would stand and do whatever it takes to, you know, denounce any sort of hate in this community. And I'm, I think it's absolutely the worst, just reading in the paper what's going on.
The city council recently voted to denounce Mayor Woodward for appearing alongside former state rep Matt Shea and self-described Christian nationalist Sean Foote. Councilwoman Wilkerson was a co-sponsor in that resolution and faced criticism that the move was political and infringed on religious liberties. Please, we're going to be starting with you. Was this resolution appropriate?
Absolutely not. The best thing that our leadership, this is, again, why we need new leadership, you know, running our city council. Personally, it was a, in my opinion, and what I've heard from many others of you in the community, a waste of time. What should have been done is saying, you know, she apologized. The city council should have said, this is how you bring people together, and say, you know, she apologized, let's work on this together. I never heard one word from the mayor that she even said anything in a positive manner about Matt Shea. And she truly, I've known the woman for four years, she was there for a prayer service. Take her at her word, and let's move on, because if you bring it up over and over and over again, all it does is just increase anger in people. We have so much going on in our community right now with our homeless and crime. I mean, I thought it was absolutely uncalled for.
Betsy, why was this official statement by the council necessary?
I think it was necessary. First of all, both my parents was ministers, and I was taught pray without ceasing, and I got some kneepads to prove that. But the mayor is always the mayor. She is the CEO of the city, just as council president is council president everywhere I would go. So we represent the city. Since that incident, and I'm not drawing a correlation, but hate has gone up in our city since that incident with Matt Shea. When you represent one, you represent all. It was not against anybody praying, but associations matter, and whether it's true or not, perceptions matter. That's the way we are in our society. I wish we could all get it right all the time, but perceptions are important, and as the CEO, she was in a place that did not give a good look for the city of Spokane.
Can I rebut that? Betsy and Zach, it's all about, you know, being right, and I think that they have, their words and their actions about this situation have made, you know, you talked about hate going up. It just anchors more people. And what they should have said is, you know, people make mistakes, let's forgive our mayor and move on, and let's work this out together to show support and bring people together. Instead, you know, they have to bring her in front of the entire city, which is an embarrassment to, you know, us, to other cities. They're like, you know, I know other cities in our state.
That's time.
Sorry. Apologize.
Emery, could I have?
Go ahead.
Just 10 seconds. So it wasn't just about council members, opponent, myself. There was a huge outcry from our community. Council members, opponent, and I didn't just sit around and say, hey, let's write this resolution and try to embarrass the mayor or make it a campaign. We had letters from the faith community, from other nonprofits, from individuals who were upset about her actions. And political, who knew when it was going to happen? So it wasn't political. I didn't plan it. So it wasn't just us. Our community asked for what we delivered.
Some council members and candidates have suggested that the city should wind down the Trent Resource and Assistance Center. The city run 350-bed homeless shelter opened last summer, largely because of how expensive it is. Do you support closing it by the end of the next year? And if so, specifically, what would you replace it with? Betsy?
I can wait. So, the track, you know, we're talking a lot about the Regional Homeless Coalition. There is not enough money to continue to fund the track the way it is designed today. It runs about $9 million a year. We are looking at winding that down. Hopefully, the regional homeless group that's being talked about in our city, they would come up, step up, and take that over. They've talked about business support, they've talked about philanthropy support, we've talked about more state resources coming to the table, but it's a financial decision and a humanitarian decision. I cannot see people on the street, especially going into the winter. We are compassionate society. I will work really hard to find money until there is a better solution.
Kim?
Well, the Trent Shelter is not sustainable. Like I said, you know, we have working families that don't get three meals a day. They serve three meals a day at the Trent Shelter. And, you know, winter is coming, so right now, that's our only alternative. It's not good that we, you know, take the convention center and, you know, put homeless people in there. They, you know, they basically put holes in the walls and ruined furniture and things like that, the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars. So right now, it's all we have, but maybe we can do cutbacks and serve two meals a day. And, but, you know, we, I've also heard from some people on our city council that it's not homey enough. You know, people are living on the street. It's not the Davenport Hotel. They have a roof over their head, and so.
So, the hominess, I just ask if there could be books at the track. When people are sitting in an open space all day long with nothing to do and services, it's not homey. Please, if you want to go do a tour, call me, I will take you. It is four walls, beds, and meals that are brought in with one faucet that's attached for the hose that's attached for water, so we're not making homelessness comfortable. We, again, are compassionate community.
Well, again, I just want to say that they have a roof over their head, and it's a place to be and to get something to eat, and there are porta-potties, but, you know, and again, it's better than being on the street. So we just have to, again, it comes down to new leadership, and... and, um, and new solutions about working together with the mayor and the city council to come up with different ideas of how we can do it differently.
Do you support current plans to redesign Division Street in order to prioritize bus traffic, including by potentially reducing car lanes? This one's going to go to Kim first.
I, I do not support the road diet on Division. Um, a waste of money in my opinion. As soon as the north-south freeway opens, traffic will all, you know, automatically shift to that, to get from, you know, the north side all the way downtown. So, um, I don't support it. I, I think it's a waste of money. Um, if you look at the current bu- bus situation right now, our buses are empty. Uh, so to spend that kind of money, um, I think is an injustice to our taxpayers.
Betsy?
I do support it. It is intertwined with the north-south corridor. They are built, they are funded and built in tandem to get people, when the north-south corridor is finished, to get people off Division. Also, with that dedicated bus lane, it doesn't mean a car can't drive in it. So there's a real disconnect going on. And it will help with our environmental sustainability, carbon neutral. A lot of our young kids don't even want to drive a car. So we have to make transportation as convenient and as affordable as possible. And all the vacant buildings on Division, look at how those could be redeveloped into economic centers or housing for our city. Look at other places across the state and you'll see it, uh, all over the place. So I do support it.
Again, I, I, I do not approve of this. It's almost like they want us to give up our cars and ride the bus. I'm sorry, this community is not going to give up our cars.
That is not asking people to give up your cars. You still have a choice. So you can have a choice of a car or you could have a choice of public transportation. Both should be equally available and especially for the folks who cannot afford a vehicle. Then we have to provide a way for them to get to work and play and socialize in our city.
I'm not saying that we don't have excellent bus service here in Spokane. We do.
Some residents in the Leita Valley are calling for a pause on new residential development because of concerns that roads and firefighting infrastructure are buckling under population growth. Do you support a moratorium? And can you pledge today that the needed infrastructure improvements will be completed by the end of your term? This is going to go to Betsy first.
Interesting question. I just had a meeting with Wash Dot today about this and we talked about a moratorium. And the conversation is, this is Wash Dot talking to me. It's like, Betsy, if you do a moratorium, it takes all the attention off of the work you should be doing. He says the city of Spokane has been very conflicted about really the political will and capital to do the work that has been on the books for years. This is a can that's been kicked down the road. I believe that if we have the political will with the right administration, we can do the things, we can grow down there and we could make it safe. And there's already a plan, uh, on the books to start working on a fire station. That's the first thing, because it's more than just transportation. It's the schools, it is the bus, it is a library, it's a fire station. So we have to be careful of how we want to approach that. And it does take money to build, but there is other money, state and federal, that could help us do that work.
Kim?
Well, my opponent has been on the city council for three years. And those people up in the Leita Valley, up in Eagle Ridge, have been, um, not served, in my opinion. And there should have been infrastructure in place. And that's what, where I'm different than my opponent. With my business experience, again, it comes down to planning and you always plan down the road. You know, I've been endorsed by the Spokane Association of Realtors, the Spokane Home Builders Association. I have a long history in my family's in the real estate business. I understand infrastructure, housing. Um, doing a moratorium does nothing. It take, you know, she's kicked the can down the road for the last three years. I, I, so I, I, I will do whatever I can. That's one of my first priorities, is to look at the Leita Valley, get the developers, get the neighborhoods in the room and get it worked out. Because we have a housing shortage right now.
There is a housing shortage, but the plan and design would have happened on the side of the administration. So again, our form of government, council cannot direct staff. I just want to make that clear to everyone. We will partner, we will work, we will lobby for money, but that happens on the administrative side of the house. And the administrative side of the house has kicked the can down the road. We have to collaborate to get this work done and it'll take strong leadership.
Well, I, I think, I don't think that's true because the city council approves, uh, you know, developments and developers put infrastructure in place. Uh, and, you know, you, you, here again, the blame stops today or the blame's going to stop the day that I get elected. I give you my word. Uh, it's just a blame game that people are tired of. Not my fault, that's got to end.
Do you support proposals to create a safe, legal place for the homeless who are living in their cars to park at night? If so, what should that look like? If not, where should these people go? Kim?
Well, I do not support, um, vehicles, uh, in parking lots around Spokane. In fact, I, I have a great big huge sign in my yard that says, "Not in my lot." Uh, so I, I, I am not in support of that whatsoever. So the alternative, um, you know, uh, let's talk about the homeless situation again. You know, one of the things is last February, I worked at, I spent several hours at the Homeless Coalition, a great, um, organization where they, at the convention center, they have a day where the homeless could come in and get food and showers and haircuts and things like that. And, uh, the one thing that they didn't have there was, you know, workforce training and companies there to give jobs, um, uh, to people that are looking for work. You could get your warrant erased, but you can't, um, there was no place where you can sign up to, you know, get a job.
Betsy?
The big question for our city is where can people go? So I had the opportunity to visit Vancouver in another city over in the Seattle area that had RV parking, uh, campsites for cars. It was run by a nonprofit. The gentleman I talked to goes, my RV is too old to be in a regular RV park. I didn't realize that. So he had his RV there. The services are there, it was maintained, it was a community. It's not going to go away just because we ignore it and don't want to deal with it. And again, with a lot of things we're talking about, if you don't want them here, where do you want people to be? Just pushed into the neighborhoods? We have got to have a real conversation about that. And it can't always be not in my backyard.
Well, again, you know, we're talking about the trench shelter and there's, it's not sustainable. So you'd have to change zoning and everything in the city to allow that. And to me, that's just pushing out in the neighborhoods where it's just going to cause more issues, more crime, more problems. Do you want that? Absolutely not.
Betsy, I'm sorry to cut you off. Unfortunately, that is all the time that we're going to have tonight for questions. We're going to end tonight's debate with closing statements. Uh, Kim, we're going to start with you.
Uh, thank you. Um, I'm Kim, please. I want to be your next city council president. Again, I have the background, the education. Uh, I've learned over 32 years of owning a successful business in Spokane. I've, I've learned how to pivot. The difference between my opponent and I is every day I had to go to work. I went to work and figured it out. How to get work, earn the trust of people, my clients, pivot, constantly figure out, you know, uh, do the work, um, and then try to get paid for the work. I mean, um, my opponent gets a check, you know, every guaranteed check from the government every single month for her business. My business was shut down. I know, I know, um, how to pivot, how to work. Um, this is a nonpartisan position and I can tell you, I will be here for this community. I'm willing to spend the next four years to make the city I love a better place.
Betsy?
The citizens of Spokane have a clear choice this year. Yes, I'm a small business owner too. Oldest black-owned business in Spokane since 1976, caring for people who are mentally ill. And we pivoted and survived through COVID as well. But the choice is experienced leadership that listens, a leader who knows the job, a leader who knows the community, because I can find solutions that works for all. And I will work for anyone and show up in a leader who loves this city. I would be honored to have your vote. BetsyWilkerson.com. Thank you.
Could I say one last thing?
That's it. I'm so sorry, Kim. Kim, Betsy, I really appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Ms. Brown, thank you for taking the time today.
Thank you.
You've both lived in this community for decades and have been squarely in the public eye for much of that time. For those who have not already made up their minds about you, make your case as to why you're the right person to lead the city. Mayor, we're going to start with you.
Thank you, Emery, and thank you for everyone for coming here tonight. Thank you for the spokesman review, for putting this important debate on. You know, my first term in office faced some unprecedented challenges. A global health pandemic, a summer of protests, defund the police movement, our first riot, housing crisis, unprecedented workforce shortages, inflation in Camp Hope. Any one of those things would be difficult for a new mayor or an experienced mayor. And not coming from a place of politics, I love my city. And I am a former business owner, journalist for 28 years in Spokane, knew my city, and am extremely proud at how I've been able to lead the city through all of those in their totality. And we have some work to do. I want to make sure that we stay going down the right road and that we have a bright future and that we don't let the city of Spokane become like other cities up and down the West Coast.
Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Gonzaga, No Lie, Spokesman Review. The next mayor of Spokane should be an experienced collaborative leader who takes responsibility and gets things done. I will be that mayor. I've spent 30 years learning how to serve this community well. From the students I've taught, Go Egs, Go Zags, to the new medical school we created, Go Cougs. You can see the way I've responded effectively to the ideas of the city, Crosswalk Youth Center up north, Fox Theater downtown. I stand up for things that matter, like a cleaner Spokane River and a diversified Spokane economy that creates good jobs. And I stand up for people that matter, like our LGBTQ community, our childcare workers, our newly arrived Ukrainian refugees. No one will tell you that Spokane is better off on homelessness or public safety than we were four years ago. It's common knowledge that there has been division, dysfunction, and a budget crisis. There's a better way. And if you elect me mayor, we will find common ground and move forward.
Well, what I would say to that is that the city of Spokane is not unique. We are facing the challenges that cities across our state are facing. Homelessness has gone up. Homelessness has gone up across the state and under Lisa's leadership at Commerce to 25,000 statewide. Crime has gone up. We took tools away from officers. Crime has gone up. I fought and advocated to get those tools back. And cities across the county or across the state are dealing with budget crises right and left because the cost of doing business is expensive. Revenues are not keeping up with expenditures. It is what everyone is experiencing right now.
I think it's really why we need collaborative leadership that knows how to work with federal and state resources, bring things to the, bring people and organizations together with those resources. There are a lot of good ideas here, but honestly, we have not been moving forward the last four years. There have been a lot of division and there's not a vision for the future, a plan that people can point to about where we're going with these, with these challenging issues of the unhoused population and the economic insecurity faced by many people in Spokane. I can change that with you.
This region has a long history of being confronted with hate, whether the MLK march bomb threat, the legacy of the Aryan nations, and just recently, we've seen a string of vandalization of LGBTQ symbols and organizations. What is the city's role in combating that hate? Lisa, we're going to start with you.
Well, the city leadership and the city council need to be exemplary in their own statements and actions. I'm proud to have marched in the First Pride March in Spokane in 1992 and to have been an ally of our communities of color and of Sandy Williams as we developed the vision of the Carl Maxi Center and have marched in many MLK Day parades, except when I was in Olympia. So I think that it's a leadership question and that it's more than that. It's bringing those voices to the table, being part of the decision-making process. I would do that, starting with a transition committee after being elected and so that our policies more deeply reflect the engagement with those communities.
Mayor.
I think as leaders and certainly as mayor, I've been very vocal about the attacks recently on our street murals and in the Perry District. We are better than that. I denounce hate of any kind against any group, whether it's BIPOC, Jewish, LGBTQ+. And the best way for a mayor to support diverse communities in our city is through our hiring process. On my cabinet, I have LGBTQ+. The first person I brought into the mayor's office was LGBTQ. I have BIPOC. I have diversity on my cabinet. And I think that's one of the best ways, as a leader, to show that you support diversity in your community, diversity in the city, and certainly diversity at a leadership level of a cabinet member.
Mayor, last year at your State of the City address, you highlighted moving the House of Charity out of downtown as a key goal. You recently highlighted the concentration of homeless services in that area is exacerbating urban blight near the intersection of Second and Division. This week, Catholic Charities, which runs that facility, said that you have either declined to help or have actively resisted efforts to move the facility. Why has no progress been made on this issue?
Well, listen, I initiated this conversation with Catholic Charities last year because, yes, I hear from businesses every single day that are being impacted very negatively by the concentration of Housing First and House of Charity downtown in just a few city blocks. We worked very aggressively to try to find locations. Catholic Charities has very specific specifications that they need to relocate that shelter, and they want a very large campus. So we looked at different locations. Two of those locations happened to be in the West Hills, and they were shovel-ready. And we looked at those, and they were under consideration until we cleared out Camp Hope through the Row Initiative, the Ride of Way Initiative, and Catholic Charities was given money to buy the hotel on the top of Sunset Hill and convert it. And I wasn't going to deconcentrate downtown and move it to the West Hills. So we have engaged in conversations about looking for other locations.
Lisa, do you agree that too many homeless services have been cited downtown? And what would you do differently to address the issue of blight?
I agree that both downtown and other neighborhoods shouldn't bear a disproportionate share, but that part of the problem has been a concentration on larger facilities and smaller facilities would be good. In the 2019 homelessness debate, the mayor said, under her leadership, Spokane could be a model for other cities. That has not been the case. Instead of a plan, there's been sort of an ever-changing cast of characters, as well as Cannon Street open, then closed, then open, then closed again. I believe that we can bring people together and do both better outreach to the unhoused population as well as working with neighborhoods and faith leaders to come up with facilities where people can come inside.
Well, let me just remind you that we did have COVID.
Catholic Charities has very specific specifications that they need to relocate that shelter and they want a very large campus. So we looked at different locations. Two of those locations happened to be in the West Hills and they were shovel-ready. And we looked at those and they were under consideration until we cleared out Camp Hope through the Row Initiative, the Ride of Way Initiative, and Catholic Charities was given money to buy the hotel on the top of Sunset Hill and convert it. And I wasn't going to de-concentrate downtown and move it to the West Hills. So we have engaged in conversations about looking for other locations.
Lisa, do you agree that too many homeless services have been cited downtown? And what would you do differently to address the issue of blight?
I agree that both downtown and other neighborhoods shouldn't bear a disproportionate share, but that part of the problem has been a concentration on larger facilities and smaller facilities would be good. In the 2019 homelessness debate, the mayor said, under her leadership, Spokane could be a model for other cities. That has not been the case. Instead of a plan, there's been sort of an ever-changing cast of characters as well as Cannon Street open, then closed, then open, then closed again. I believe that we can bring people together and do both better outreach to the unhoused population as well as working with neighborhoods and faith leaders to come up with facilities where people can come inside.
Well, let me just remind you that we did have COVID and we had a lockdown and we did everything we could to keep our unhoused housed during the pandemic. And we would normally have closed the warming center and we didn't. We housed them in the library downtown when it was closed for renovation, in the arena, and now where the Way Out Shelter is. We focused on housing the unhoused so they wouldn't be susceptible to disease or spread disease. We will be a model city when we adopt a regional homeless authority. Unfortunately, my council has deferred indefinitely a decision to do that, but we will do better when we get agreement from the council to help us do that.
I would like a rebuttal. We have to do the basic math. There are over, clearly over 2,000 visibly homeless people, only 1,000 emergency shelter beds. That number went up only by a couple hundred over the last four years. We can do better than that. I've been meeting with the homeless coalition. Believe there are good ideas out there. One of them is not the track shelter. I think we should divert from that. But I do believe that we can come up with new solutions and I do support a regional approach to the issue as well.
Moving on to an audience question. What is your stance on the fluoridation of Spokane's municipal water system? Lisa, we're going to start with you.
Thank you so much, Emery. I believe in fluoridation as a public health intervention. I don't believe that we've identified funds for it or sufficient public consensus. And funds are very important right now because there is a structural budget deficit and a budget deficit projected for next year of at least $20 million. So it is not at the top of my list.
Mayor.
Well, my position on that hasn't changed. My position has been if we're going to do something that impacts every single person in the city of Spokane, like fluoridating our water, does, they should have a vote. And I know voters have turned it down three times. The last time, though, was just a little over 20 years. So that definitely needs to go to a public vote. We don't have the funds. My challenger is right. We do not have the funds to do that. And let me just remind people that if we want to target a demographic of our population that needs fluoride, like young, young children, then let's spend the money to target that demographic. Less than 1% of the city's water is even ingested. So to think that that's going to be a benefit to those who need it, your cars are going to get more fluoride, your dishes are going to get more fluoride, your lawn's going to get more fluoride and so is your laundry than anyone who drinks the water.
Moving on to another audience question. What are your plans for restoring and sustaining the health of the Spokane River? Mayor, we're going to start with you.
Well, we've done a really good job over the years. We are a model for our CSO tanks. That was under the former administration, Mayor David Condon. We invested hundreds of millions of dollars in CSO tanks that are underground. They capture the runoff. They clean the water before it goes into the river. Remember when we banned phosphates? We've done some things over the years. Our river is our biggest, most important natural resource. We need to do everything we can to keep the river clean. One of our biggest challenges, though, is homeless camping along the rivers. And we have passed an ordinance, council did, to ban camping along the embankments and all of the garbage and human waste that is now going into the river. That's a huge challenge that it's tough to keep up with. But we need to do everything we can to keep our river pristine.
Ms. Brown.
Well, I agree that that was good work by the former administration in creating the combined sewer overflow infrastructure to reduce runoff into the river, but I think there's still more that can be done there. I look forward to working with the Riverkeeper and others on what those measures might be. When it comes to banning phosphates, I did that in the legislature with then Representative Andy Billick. That was one of his first bills and I was very proud to help him as a senator to get that across the finish line. I know that we do have, and I participate actively every year in river cleanup. I know we still have issues of both mining waste and we need to do, keep moving forward with our water conservation issues. And I think there's probably more the city can do to lead on that. I know that the council has passed rules for households, but I want to make sure that the city is kind of walking its talk when it comes to water use and reuse.
Do you support creating a safe, legal place for the homeless who are living in their cars to park at night? If so, what should that look like? If not, where should these people go? Lisa, we're going to start with you.
I do believe we need to go upstream. The unhoused population is not just a fixed population. In fact, there are people that are transitioning out of homelessness due to good work of nonprofits in our community into affordable housing. However, there are more people becoming homeless. And often, one of the steps before that is living in your car. So I do believe creating a place with security and services where people could, outreach could be done to have them come and potentially connect them to housing or reconnect them to housing before they are on the street would be a good move for our community. And there are communities that are piloting this. So what I would do is go look and see what their experience has been, what type of operators they used and what type of success rates they had. And we would bring that information back to the community to have this conversation.
Mayor.
I do not support so-called safe parking lots. I don't think anyone would want them in their neighborhood. I think we should expect more for someone than living in a car. A car is not a home. And we have facilities for people who want to get connected to services. And I don't think it's safe. I don't think it's safe. I also don't support camping near schools or licensed daycares or parks. I think we need to bring people off the street and inside, connecting them to services like we operate Track, the Trent Resource and Assistance Center. I know there are cities on the west side of Washington that are considering that. Bellevue is one of them, but they can't find an operator. Where are we going to get the money to fund the operations and the management of those so-called safe parking lots? I don't think there's anything safe about them.
Rebuttal. Nobody's talking about safe parking lots. What I'm talking about is a single place and it would be designed to be temporary place because we want to connect the person back to housing. The idea that we have places for them, no, we don't. Do the math. There's already 1,000 more people living outside than there are spaces in our emergency shelter system. And this came to me because neighbors told me. I knocked on doors in Corbin Park and other places and they said, people are sleeping in their cars in my neighborhood and we need to do something about that.
Well, I'd like to know where you're going to put them because that's going to be a huge challenge. But I go back to an article that was in the spokesman review a few years ago about a mother and a father whose daughter died in a so-called safe parking lot in the city of Seattle. That parking lot now has been shut down. And they went to Seattle to see where their daughter died. And they said that there is no way you would ever want your son or your daughter to live in conditions like that. I just don't think it's safe. And when you say that we have 1,000 more people than beds, we're not going to have beds for every single homeless person in a low-barrier emergency shelter. We have other programs that we have residential situations that we could, we could address their needs.
The city is currently working to address an approximately $20 million hole in next year's budget. The county and the valley are not similarly in this kind of financial distress. How did we get here and how do we get out of it?
Well, from what I understand, the county is facing a structural budget. The city of Spokane Valley is a little bit different. They're a contractual city, so they don't have the same types of services that we do. But again, the city of Spokane is not unique. City, according to the Association of Washington Cities, which two of our council members serve on their board, more than a third of the cities in this state are facing structural gaps because revenues have not caught up with expenditures. Inflation is making things very, very challenging. We have to get back to priorities and core level services. So we're doing three things to show. I've already given the council, October 2nd, a proposed preliminary budget and it is balanced. So we have filled that gap. We're doing it with organizational efficiencies. We are hiring, we're putting a hiring freeze and we're looking at ways that we can increase revenue. I've already balanced the budget. It's whether or not the council approves of the way I've balanced it and we'll see what happens there in November.
The way we got here is because three years in a row, the mayor introduced a budget, the council passed it. It was overspent and one-time money was used to fill the gap. Now our reserves are drained and we have a structural deficit. That means that expenditures are growing faster, a couple of percent faster than revenues are growing. The mayor's budget proposal does not address the structural gap. It kicks the can down the road using another set mostly of one-time funds. It also makes rosy projections about sales tax revenue, projecting that it would be 6% year over year when it's only growing 1.9% right now. So the first principle of budgeting is when you're digging a hole, stop digging. And we need some real fiscal responsibility and someone who can look both long-term and short-term at options for creating a true long-term balanced budget.
Well, and we are planning strategically to make sure that the structural gap gets smaller and smaller every year. In fact, our team has won a national award for budgeting principles. And so we're working on some of those issues. When Lisa talks about reserves that we spent, those were reserves built up over the last several years because we had a labor contract with our police union that went four years without a new contract. And we saved money, rainy day, we saved it in a bank account so that we could pay for that contract and back pay for four years for those officers. So yeah, we used those reserves, but they were planned for that specific intention.
The national award was for how the document looked, not for the budgeting. The budgeting was not good. Second, it's another principle of budgeting that when you enter into contracts that put your expenditures higher than your revenue, you need to come forward with adjustments to the revenue at that point in time or other cuts to the budget. This administration has not faced up to the severity of this budget situation. And I believe we're at risk of a downgrade in our bond rating that will affect our ability to create infrastructure that Spokane wants and needs.
Nobody gets an award for the way something looks.
Mayor, we're moving on.
Thank you.
Revenue from red light cameras and speeding cameras, the tickets issued by these cameras traditionally go into the Traffic Calming Fund, which is typically spent on infrastructure projects such as stop signs, speed humps, things that increase pedestrian and traffic safety. Mayor, you have called for pulling some money from that fund in order to backfill the police department budget. Lisa, this question's going to be going to you first. Do you think that that's an appropriate use of those funds?
No. One of the things I hear at the doors is that people are already frustrated that their neighborhood council approved traffic calming projects that haven't been completed yet. And so I don't think we should raid the Traffic Calming Fund for this budget situation that we're in. And furthermore, in the reorganization of the police staffing, traffic safety officers were pulled back. So this has kind of been a double hit and neighborhoods have noticed and I've heard from North Monroe to Hilliard that they're concerned about it. So we certainly should not be pulling the Traffic Calming Funds.
Mayor.
Traffic calming funds started out many years ago as $50,000 per legislative district for, like you mentioned, roundabouts or speed bumps. That budget now brings in millions of, the cameras bring in, and the council continues to add more cameras throughout the city, millions and millions and millions of dollars every year. Our Public Works Department can't even keep up with the number of projects that that would fund. They can't design them fast enough, they can't implement them fast enough, construct them, and they certainly can't maintain them. And there is nothing better than a traffic calming tool than an officer in your neighborhood. And so if we can use some of those funds which have accumulated to, I think the bucket right now is about $10 million. If some of those can go to officers, that's the best traffic calming option that we can give a neighborhood. So I support that.
The traffic calming, $10 million actually doesn't go very far in terms of traffic calming projects. And the backlog is a major frustration. It's a compact that we've made with our neighborhood councils that they would come together as citizen volunteers and recommend these projects for the safety of their families. And I heard a business owner tell me personally how she felt it was harming her business to have the fast speeds down Market Street. And so I think this really is a commitment that we need to keep. And I think that there are other ways that we can address the budget deficit.
Well, let me just say, I'm not saying that I don't support traffic calming projects, but when we've got a bucket that is as, has accumulated as much money as it has and it brings in the kind of revenue and the priority is for more officers, I would like to see some of those funds used for officers. We can still have traffic calm, we can have both, but there needs to be a balance.
On the issue of police accountability, is the Office of the Police Ombudsman currently sufficiently empowered to provide oversight of the police department? And specifically, should it have the authority to compel interviews with officers during investigations? Lisa, you'll start.
I believe that we have not fulfilled the public's vision of a truly empowered and independent Office of Police Ombudsman that was overwhelmingly approved in the tragic wake of Otto Zem's death. And that can be strengthened. However, the mechanism for strengthening it is the collective bargaining process and that is in the purview of the administration. And so I would take action and work with our law enforcement to strengthen the OPO. And I specifically believe that that investigative authority is important for assuring that the true investigations can move forward. I also support investigations of the chief.
Mayor.
We have strengthened the authority of the ombudsman in every contract negotiation we have passed with police. It is right now not allowed, the ombudsman is not allowed to have subpoena power over our police chief and our officers. I don't support that. But the authority has been strengthened every single contract that we pass. We have, as a police department, we are a model for the reforms that we have implemented during this time. I know voters voted that overwhelmingly, they wanted police oversight. We have a police oversight commission of civilians. Our ombudsman can now write closing reports. But I'm going to tell you, if you want to lose officers, the fastest way to lose officers or not be able to recruit or hire officers is to allow the ombudsman to have subpoena power over them and their chief and also to take away qualified immunity. I'd like to know what my challenger thinks about that. I know the AG wanted that. We didn't get, that didn't get passed at the state level, but that means that an officer could get sued just for doing their job. There is no way in heck anyone is ever going to come to the Spokane Police Department to work or wear the badge if that ever happens.
Some residents in the Leita Valley are calling for a pause on new residential development because of concerns that improvements to roads, sorry, because of concerns that roads and firefighting and infrastructure are buckling under population growth. Do you support a moratorium? And can you pledge today that needed infrastructure improvements will be completed by the end of your term? Mayor, we're going to start with you.
We have a housing crisis. I called a housing emergency a couple of years ago. We were the fastest-growing county in the state in 2021 and 2022. We already had a housing supply. It was already tight and it just got worse. That's why we've seen our prices for housing go up, almost doubling in some instances and people can't afford to buy a house. So no, I don't support a moratorium. What I do support is working with neighborhoods to make sure we can get that infrastructure. They're not going to get the infrastructure unless the development happens, unless the houses are built. That's how you get infrastructure. But what I am willing to do and what I've talked to with neighbors in Eagle Ridge, I've listened to the neighborhood correspondence in Leita, is to start changing our impact fees, which were never changed for 20 years. So that's traffic impact, that's GFCs. So that's traffic impact, that's GFCs, we're updating those. Those are developer-paid. You're going to get infrastructure if development happens. We're also looking at projects that we can do on city-owned property. I know Leita wants a fire station. We are looking at ways that we can do some sewer improvements so that that is shovel-ready on city-owned property designated for a fire station, so it's more attractive for state construction funds.
The citizens of Leita Valley are asking for a moratorium because administration after administration has failed to make progress on the key infrastructure. There are over 3,000 new units in one or more phase of development, and there is a very real life-or-death issue, which is fire safety and only one road in and out of the neighborhood. So they are asking for this as a way to put pressure on the process to start putting the plans in place for that infrastructure. This idea that you do development first and infrastructure later is just backwards. We need to do it the other way around. Neighborhoods in Spokane deserve, and Leita Valley does not have sufficient egress out of their neighborhood, fire protection, transit, schools, parks. This has been allowed to happen, I agree, under previous administrations, but this administration has not put a plan in place, and I will put a plan in place. I can't commit to having the infrastructure completed. Sorry, I wanted to answer the question.
Well, again, we're working on those structure fees that have not been implemented for many, many years. We can't do it overnight. We're going to phase in those fees that are being worked on right now. They are paid by the developers, and that gives you infrastructure in the future because that's all that does. Unless there's building, you're not going to get the infrastructure. Schools don't come into an area and say, "We think there's going to be a population growth here, and we're going to put a school there." That's not the way it happens. But we are working on a fire station in that area because I agree, we need more fire safety. And so that's why we're looking at a city-owned property to locate a fire station, get it shovel-ready so we can get some grants. But we don't have the money to provide all of this infrastructure right now.
Rebuttal. So development fees are not the only way to create infrastructure. Capital planning in the city is part of that process, and working with the State Department of Transportation is part of that process. They are the ones that sent a letter to the administration early on saying, "We need to do something here," or they will start shutting down exits onto the highway. So we can work with WashDOT, there are other resources available. I've already talked with the school district. We can bring governments together and make progress on this.
Earlier this year, the city council passed a slate of landlord-tenant reforms. Mayor, you vetoed this reform package, though the veto was overridden by a supermajority on the city council. Do these reforms go far enough? Should the city go further to protect renters? Or do they go too far and make it too difficult to be a landlord? Lisa, we're going to start with you.
I do support the package that was passed, and I am really concerned that we are facing another wave of evictions, particularly from seniors who are living in subsidized housing. I just met with a group on North Division. They've been all converted to month-to-month leases, even if they've lived there for 10 years, and their rent's gone up twice in the last six months. And so I do think we should revisit the package and make sure there's more notification before an individual can be evicted. I think that unfortunately, the month-to-month lease allows the landlord perhaps not to give that kind of notice, so it's definitely something we need to take up, or we are going to have seniors evicted and on the streets in Spokane.
Mayor?
Well, and one of the reasons that I didn't support it, we had many, many community conversations, we had town halls, we brought stakeholders in, we listened to the landlords, we listened to the tenants' union, and my fear was that we would lose the mom-and-pops. The mom-and-pops are the privately-owned properties, and because they don't have a mortgage, they are willing to work with their tenants and offer lower rent, lower than market value. And they said basically, if you continue to put more restrictions on us and don't give us rights as well, then we're going to sell our properties and you're going to lose units. My focus was, let's direct our energy on the small number of landlords that are offering slumlord conditions that aren't being good landlords over their tenants, and let's address that. Let's not do blanket restrictions on all landlords who are actually doing a great job of providing a roof over their tenants' heads.
I got to take that one on. We are already losing mom-and-pops. We are already having national companies buying up rental properties. This administration left affordable housing dollars on the table that they could have applied for. Part of her proposal is taking housing investment dollars and moving that to the Trent Shelter. We have one of the tightest housing markets in the country. We have 30% to 40% of our population constrained by their mortgage or their rent payments.
And I'll just add something. We are using new money, sales tax money, 1590. It goes to affordable and attainable housing. We are working at the city to be able to leverage those funds. We've got about $15 million right now and leverage to bond against it so we can have even more funds to get more attainable housing built as quickly as possible. And we're going to be releasing that plan very, very soon.
Mayor, you have criticized Lisa's management of the State Department of Commerce, particularly in how that organization spent money to empty Camp Hope. You've gone so far as to say that you believe that, in part, Camp Hope was started and kept open to intentionally hurt you politically. Can you speak to your thoughts on Brown's management of Camp Hope?
Well, I think it was an utter failure. We spent $25 million on Camp Hope, and very few people have been permanently housed. Most of them are at Trac, the Trent Resource and Assistance Center, which my challenger continues to criticize. It was mostly used, most of that money was used to buy a hotel, to rehabilitate that hotel, and about half of those rooms are full because nobody wants to follow the rules. Very few people were housed for $25 million. She fought to keep that encampment open. We even got sued at the city because we were working with the county to try to move people along or into housing or clean up that encampment. 18 months, that neighborhood, a low-income, mostly-minority neighborhood victimized. I bet my challenger never visited the neighbors living there or the businesses that were impacted. We needed to close that encampment. And I'll tell you one thing, there's encampments up and down the West Coast, but nobody ever blames the mayor for the encampments like I was blamed. So yes, it was very, very political.
Lisa?
Yeah, Camp Hope shouldn't have happened, and there won't be a Camp Hope on my watch. And I believe the mayor wanted homeless people out of downtown and shut down a shelter without opening another one. The commerce funding to close Camp Hope was not just for the people at Camp Hope. It was specifically designed by the legislature to expand affordable housing. And so 100 units of affordable housing was created through the catalyst facility that the mayor requested. There were about 100 units of shared supportive housing and rehousing in private apartments, and about 100 shelter beds at both Hope House and Trac, 16 detox beds for compassionate addiction treatment. And people were hired as peer navigators to help connect people to the assessments and services that were required by the legislation.
We opened up Trac, and we were trying to get the people who were operating and managing that encampment, who happened, a nonprofit, that got $1.5 million to manage that camp, who created that encampment. And we knew that the contracted dollars were going to end at the end of June, and that's why they fought to keep the encampment open until the end of June of this year. We could have closed it earlier. We tried to get them to encourage people to go to Trac. They refused. They were the biggest critics of Trac, including my challenger. Only now some of those individuals have actually answered the RFP to now operate the Trac in 2024. You cannot make up that hypocrisy.
So I do believe we should transition away from Trac, and I don't think the city should own or lease these facilities. I think we should be partnering with nonprofits and private developers and leveraging state funding. I told the mayor this personally, that a leased facility cannot receive the funding from the state from the Housing Trust Fund, up to $3 million. And so I do believe we should be transitioning away from Trac. It's been ineffective and very, very costly.
The city of Spokane has committed to dramatically reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 2030 and get to net zero by 2050, but has made relatively little progress actually reducing those emissions. What specifically should the city do to move the needle on this? Mayor, I believe this is to you.
Well, this is going to be a challenge, and I know we are dealing with energy codes that have been pushed out now that don't allow for new construction, whether it's commercial or residential, natural gas hookups. Our council has dictated what kinds of cars that we can buy to replace fleet. The first decision they made was to buy electric cars, four Teslas for our police department. Teslas don't work for the police department. They weren't big enough. They weren't, we have shifts. Officers are on three shifts sharing a vehicle. You don't have time to hook it up and get it charged. So some of the decisions that I think are being made are just unrealistic. We've had to change now one of the ordinances because of the required amount of electric vehicles that you can't even get anymore, and they're very, very expensive. So we're going back to compressed vehicles. In fact, they're going to be ordering some, our police department, you'll see them driving F-150 trucks because we can't get vehicles. But some of these mandates-
Mayor, that's time. I apologize.
Are unrealistic. Sorry.
Lisa?
Yes. Well, one of the things I would do as part of a transition process would be to convene those who worked on the Sustainability Action Plan and other organizations, there are many in the community, and ask them to come up with recommendations to present to the city council and mayor for actionable things we can take in my term to move us forward on the Sustainability Action Plan. Second, I'd like to work with Avista and with the Department of Commerce on energy retrofitting some of our lowest-income households, will save them money and reduce our carbon footprint. Third, we've got to figure out what our long-term plan is for our incinerator, our waste-to-energy plant, because it's the single-largest emitter right now, and it's scheduled to have the city receive a fine. So we have to make a, we have to talk with the state about the carbon footprint of both the current facility and any alternatives, and I have some ideas about how we can do that. It's an economic, it could be an economic opportunity.
That's time. Thank you.
I'll just say, our waste-to-energy plant is a revolutionary facility. We burn our trash, we don't bury it in landfills anymore. That's the biggest emitter of carbon gas. We don't want to go back to burying trash. That facility burns our garbage and actually produces energy that we then sell back to Avista to power homes. That is technology that should not be penalized under some of these new regulations because I don't think anybody wants to go back to burying your garbage.
So the greenhouse gases are emitted from the facility, and we do have to work within the context of state law or pay that fine. I think there are some creative ideas that we might be able to employ related to carbon capture. Already talked to a local company about that. And there are other things we can do with respect to reducing our waste stream. There are some great ideas out there about reducing our food waste, and I think we can help our income-constrained households who would like to be part of the solution but don't have the funding for those extra green bins, and that would be a way to achieve that goal.
Unfortunately, we are out of time for additional questions tonight. I'd like to thank you both for being here and to ask you for your closing statements. Mayor, you are first.
Well, thank you so much. Really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight and to hear the difference, the contrast between the two of us. Voters have a big, big decision to make in this election, and there are very two different paths to our city's future. Our path is one that brings people together, it elevates law enforcement to keep our community and our neighborhood safe, it listens to voters, and it gets to work to accomplish the great things that we all want for our city. My challenger couldn't be any different. Look at her track record in Olympia, out-of-control tax and spend policies, even suing the voters to raise their taxes. She's soft on crime and supports dangerous homeless policies like the bungling of Camp Hope and so-called safe parking lots. Look, I'm not looking for my next political promotion. I know I'm the underdog here, even though I'm the incumbent, because I don't have the political experience that, I don't think you have to have political experience to do this job. We have term limits for that very reason. But I'm fighting to bring Spokane into the future, not backwards. I'm proud of my accomplishments on housing, homelessness, public safety, and economic development, and I'm asking for you one last time to vote for me for mayor. I believe government exists not to govern over the people, but to govern for the people.
Mayor, that's time. Thank you. Lisa?
Thank you. Spokane, you deserve a mayor who is an experienced collaborative leader, who will find common ground, create partnerships, find resources, and get things done. I have visions and ideas for the future from effective coordinated homelessness response to getting new fire stations and infrastructure in Five Mile and Leita Valley to bringing in more state resources for affordable housing. The nasty attacks by my opponent are a D.C. consultant's ideas of how to carry out a political campaign, go as low as possible. They are false, and the public is sick of them. You can learn more about what I really stand for at lisabrownformayor.com and join us as an endorser or volunteer, and I would appreciate that. The people of Spokane really want the same things for our city: public safety, affordable housing, opportunity, no matter what zip code you were born in, potholes filled, and the zags in the final four. We can find common ground and move forward together. If you give me your vote next week when the ballot arrives in the mail, we will do just that. Thank you very much.
Thank you both. Thank you.